Okay, well, I want to call this meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals to Order at 6:30. With a roll call vote, Mardine Badger.
Here.
Charlie Bazello.
Here.
And Dave Toth here. For purposes of our meeting, I will appoint alternate Alan Silly to the zoning board for tonight's hearing or for tonight's discussion and decision on. I just had all my information here and now I don't see it. Mardine, do you have all the case in case number and information?
Yes, I do.
Don't see.
That's all right. It is. Zoning Board Case Number 2021-02. The applicant is Michael Latulip and Albert Properties, represented by the agent of Jack McCormick Attorney. It is for a variance for lot, tax map lot 12-2-23.
And last, at our last meeting, we decided to continue the discussion of this case pending the appointment of Alan Silly to the board for tonight at the request of Attorney Jack McCormick. I want to continue that discussion. This evening, we had discussed the each of the criteria the last time. Would it be helpful, Alan, if we continued that discussion?
I I don't, I've looked at the minutes. I did not get a chance to watch the recording. I believe I can go forward with you guys with a little help. The only thing I don't have is any paperwork in front of me to go by, so I think I can handle it. I apologize for that.
Mardine, can you put up the the application so Alan will be able to see that?
Yes, I will do that. Okay. First of all, this is the application. What do, what do you wish to review on this?
I have seen all of this online. We don't really have to go through it. We talk about something in particular. Obviously, I'm not on my computer to bring this up. If I have questions, I will definitely let you know.
I can bring up any of the documents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a question since Alan was not able to watch the Zoom?
That is correct.
My understanding was that you would have that this continuation would be as if you were at that meeting and had watched the Zoom. So I'm just wondering, did you have the chance to read the abutters' statement?
Can I ask who's speaking, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Lisa Weiss.
Lisa, I think, Lisa, I think, point of order, I think the deliberation, we can't speak now. It's like we're not there.
Yes.
Yes.
We are in, we are in the zoning board deliberation period. I do, Alan did say that he has read the minutes.
Yes, I have.
And the minutes were pretty much a transcript of the meeting.
They were pretty precise.
Yeah.
And as I read the minutes, I think the positions expressed by the abutters were clear in the minutes as well as the, as well as the applicant. So I'm comfortable going ahead with this at this time. Perhaps we can review our discussion a little bit on the, on the criteria and then we can hold our vote. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yes, it is to me.
Okay. On the first criteria, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest.
Okay, I'll, a couple of comments from me. I do believe that the proposal will retain the rural look of the area. It does not have any more impact on the the area, any more impact than any of the allowed uses within that zone would have. Anywhere from a single-family home to agricultural forestry or farming impact.
And I'll comment that it's generally not in the public interest to offer a variance in a residential zone for commercial business when the local residents, abutters, would find that that compromises the residential nature of their investment.
I am concerned about the, about the abutters' concerns. But I believe that we had, we had sufficient interest to those concerns. And that that the, you know, the, those those, those concerns were, those concerns were addressed by both by the, by Mardine in terms of planning and also also by Mr. Byers and by the applicant. Alan, did you have any response to this one?
I just have a quick question. How many abutters are there in total?
Okay. I will bring up the site. Why don't I bring up the site plan?
I am, I am familiar with the territory, so to speak.
Yeah. So the abutters are just a minute, share, there we go. The abutters are Michael Latulip on this side. Richard and Abigail Sampson on this side. Across the street, Arvid and Anna Swanson. Also across the street, Lisa and Chris Weiss and the Tories in the same residence.
Right.
So there are one, two, three, four abutting lots.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other comments on the first criteria, we can go on to the second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed.
Okay. I feel it is it is a low-impact use. There, the applicant has shown intent to respect the nature of the lot, the environment. They, it it does not impact. And the, the potential impact is no more, again, than what could be allowed in that area ranging from a single residence to agricultural farming and forestry use. And it does, there is no threat to the health and safety or welfare of the public.
And the spirit of the ordinance is clearly not observed in that it creates an expectation for a residential neighborhood going forward, that future development in the area will be residential. I think the people in the area have the right to expect that, that will be the way the town sees this and that giving this variance without really a substantial reason. I think in this case, to get the variance, you need to show that there is a very significant benefit and/or that you're mitigating a difficult hardship. And neither of those conditions applies. This is not the spirit of the ordinance.
I would, I would agree more with Mardine. I think the, the ordinance allows for other uses of the land agricultural in particular. And our ordinances also allow for variances to to make adjustments for real-world situations. If this were a an intensive commercial operation, I would say that would not meet, in my mind, the the spirit of the ordinance, but this is a very low-impact use of the land. And I would also say that it also fits in with, with other mixed uses that surround this property, so I would agree that, that it does meet the spirit of the ordinance. Alan?
This is a very unique situation, obviously. Having multiple uses already existing or have existing and since, in some cases, gone away, but if we were looking at any other site besides this one, it would be an acceptable use.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on that, we can go on to the next criteria, which is granting the variance would do substantial justice. Mardine?
It is not substantially inconsistent with other uses in the area. Again, it is small building, relatively small building. It is respectful of the the environment, the way it is laid out. It is consistent with, or maybe even less impactful than the other commercial uses on either side.
I would say justice is achieved by respecting the expectations of the current zoning regulation and the expectations of the current residents.
I would, I would cite the quote that any loss to the individual is not outweighed by gain to the public. I, I don't see that this this goes against any public. I don't see that this is a loss to, to the public simply because it is a very low-impact use of the, of the property. Alan?
I believe it meets the criteria.
If there's no more discussion, let's discuss number four. Values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
While neither party, neither the applicant nor the abutters provided any specific data relating to property value. Again, the type of building and the location of the building is no more than what you might find in a house put on that lot. It is shielded by vegetation around it. It is probably less of a structure or less of a use than construction on the lot next to it. I don't believe it's going to impact the property values much one way or another.
I would say that any time you create uncertainty in a market, in this case, a residential property market, it causes potential buyers to hesitate. And that naturally results in a reduction in value. And I think that's the situation that this is.
I, because it is, because it is really such a low-impact use and because it's not visible, I don't see it, I don't see it detracting from property values in, in that area. Alan?
It's very easy to say low-impact. But it does make a difference to the neighborhood in general. Here again, if we were looking at another piece of property, it would be, we could look at it differently. I'm going to say that this meets the criteria.
Moving on to the next criteria. Denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship.
I think we need to put that, that together with the other pieces. I think we need to talk about this as a whole. The no fair and substantial relationship and the proposed use is reasonable. I think we need to talk about that altogether.
Okay.
I don't see, I don't see that there is a if we were to deny, deny this, I don't think there would be a hardship on the applicant. If I think there is a balance between the the use of the property and the public. Because it is a, it is a reasonable use of the property. Again, the the structure is no larger than a house that could be put there. The type of structure, they have tried to respect the environment that it is in, the lay, the layout of that particular lot. They have, they intend to leave as much vegetation as they can. The, so there, I don't feel there is a hardship. If we were to deny this, I don't feel there is a hardship to the applicant. At the same time, if we were to approve this variance, I do not think it is a substantial hardship to the abutters and to the neighborhood.
Well, in this, I agree with Mardine that would not be a hardship to the applicant. I think it may be an inconvenience, but the applicant has many options in locating his business. And I think he might, if he thought carefully about it, they might be economically advantageous other than to use the private property that he's proposing.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see that denying the the variance would be a substantial hardship, would provide substantial hardship for the applicant. I think there are other, there are other properties in town that are, are zone for this type of business and so I think the applicant has, has other options other than to use this property.
Alan? Comments?
I, I really can agree with everybody is what they've already said. My decision, I am not sure what I'm going to do, but anyway, that's another thing. I'm, I'm taking into consideration how the abutters feel more than anything at this moment.
Is there any more discussion by any, any other members of the board on any of the criteria? If not, we can move to a vote. We will be voting on each one of the criteria. And when, when we vote, it's important for each one of us to give our reasons either for or against. Or either yes or no, so that those reasons can be recorded in, in the minutes. That's really important in case there, in case there is an appeal or a court case resulting from, resulting from the decision of the board. So with that, I would like to, like to proceed on the question. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Mardine Badger?
Okay, just a moment. On criteria number one, I am going to say yes. And I'm sorry, I'm going to say yes because I do believe that there is that the impact on the public will be minimal because of the the particular use is a low-impact and it is no, it is no greater of an impact than other allowed uses would be on that property. It also mean, will maintain the rural look of the area.
Charlie Bazello?
Providing the variance without significant reason, significant benefit or mitigating a difficult hardship is not in the public interest when it deals with providing commercial use in a rural residential zone. I vote no.
Alan Silly?
I'm now going to get into a lengthy dissertation. I believe it meets the criteria and I vote yes.
Alan, you have to provide a reason.
It's acceptable under the, on number one.
I think the, the reason has to explain why you think it's acceptable.
I'm prepared to do that. It just meets the criteria as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
And Dave Toth, I vote yes. It it does meet the criteria. It is a very low-impact use. It blends into the surroundings. There will be very little traffic impact, very little or no noise impact. And in fact, the impact is, is probably less than if this were to go to agriculture. Okay. Criteria number two. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Mardine?
I will say yes. Again, it it does not provide any detriment to the health and safety or welfare of the public. It is respectful of the nature of the property in that area. It is respectful of the nature of the property in that area. Respectful of the environment, the way it is laid out. It is not going to have, I don't believe it will have any more impact on the neighborhood than some of the other allowed uses might. So I will say yes.
Charlie Bazello?
The spirit of the ordinance is to protect residential interests in a rural residential zone. This at face value does not uphold the spirit of the ordinance. I vote no.
Alan Silly?
This is one I'm having a little trouble with. I'm going to vote yes. It fits the majority of the criteria needed.
And Dave Toth, I'm also going to vote yes. For many of the same reasons that Mardine stated. Basically, the ordinance is designed to protect the rural residential character of of the neighborhood and because this is a low impact use. I do not see that it will significantly alter the, the rural residential character of the neighborhood. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Mardine?
I will say yes. It is consistent with other uses in the area.
Charlie Bazello?
Granting the variance would have no, no justice associated with it and it would be an imposition to the abutters. I vote no.
Alan Silly?
I'm going to vote yes. It meets the criteria.
Dave Toth, I'm also going to, going to vote yes. For the same reasons that Mark, or same reason that Mardine did. The surrounding property values will not be diminished. Mardine Badger?
I will say yes, primarily because there, I don't have any significant justification that it will diminish the surrounding property values.
Charlie Bazello?
I think the variance would create a lack of certainty that affect residential buyers in the immediate area. I also believe on a broader scale that this type of granting of a commercial variance in a rural residential zone without significant benefit or the mitigation of a hardship could suppress residential values in the entire town.
Alan Silly?
To me, this is always a best guess situation. From what I have seen and read, there is no evidence presented that would indicate that values would decrease if this was allowed. Therefore, I will vote yes.
Dave Toth, I will also vote yes because again, there is no, there was no evidence presented that this would decrease property values. Criteria number five. Denial of the variance was resulting in unnecessary hardship. Mardine Badger?
The property is not particularly unique in comparison to any other property around it. While it I, I don't see a substantial drawback to this particular to the variance for this particular use on this particular piece of property. I'm going to say yes.
Charlie Bazello?
There is no identifiable hardship to the applicant. Maybe an inconvenience and alternatively, it could be economic benefit to not provide the variance. So I vote no.
Alan Silly?
This is always the hardest one to deal with. I am going to vote yes. There is some reason of concern for obviously a butters. Which I take very seriously. It's, it's very easy to say that this business could go elsewhere. It's probably very well suited there. There's going to be. I, I, I'm missing, I'm just going to leave it at that. I believe that there'll be no hardships there at all if once it's there.
So I, what is your vote then, Alan?
I'm going to vote yes, I'm sorry.
Dave Toth, I'm going to vote yes also. Yes, the, the business could be relocated someplace else. The the land, however, is not really suited for not really well suited for other residential uses. And this use, while minimally commercial will not really disturb the rural residential character of the of, of, of the neighborhood. So I'm voting yes. So the, the variance is, is granted.
I think, do, do we want to make a motion?
Yeah.
I think.
Yes, do I have a motion to grant the variance?
Okay, based on the each of the criteria of receiving the minimum requirement of three yes votes, I will make a motion to approve the variance for this commercial use on this, on this piece of property.
Is there a second? I will, I will second that. All those in favor? Mardine Badger?
Yes.
Charlie Bazello?
No.
Alan Silly?
Yes.
And Dave Toth, yes. So the variance is granted. Do we want to discuss any any special conditions that the CBA would like to make? And communicate to the zoning, or communicate to the planning board?
I, I considered, and I will say I considered doing that. But I already, I already have in mind some conditions that, that I will be proposing with the planning board site plan approval process. And those, those will include a variety of things to address some of the abutters concerns. So I, at this point, I'm going to leave it to the planning board to assess which conditions will be appropriate for this project.
I know all of us are, are concerned about the, about the abutters and the concerns that they expressed. Charlie or Alan, do you have any conditions or recommendations you want to make to the planning board?
I'll let the planning board do their work.
Okay, Alan?
I do have, I don't have any conditions.
Okay, I do not either. So that, that, that concludes our deliberations and I will call this meeting of the zoning board of adjustment to a close.
And I would now like to call the planning board meeting to order. Roll call Kathleen DeWolf?
Present.
Paula Hancock?
Present.
Andy Fitch?
Present.
And just a note, Andy, Andy is now the select board representative to the planning board. And I'm also present, Mardine Badger, the chair. We now have before us because the variance was granted for this particular piece of property. We, the planning board now have an application for site plan review before us for this property and for this use. And it is, again, the applicant is Michael Tulup. And the agent representing him is Jack McCormick and it is for a business Allbrook Builders, which is Nick Byers and Amy Ober. It is applicant, site plan review application 2021-02. At this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the application as complete.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and again, just for public reference, accepting an application as complete is not a ruling on the application. It indicates that there is sufficient information in the application to proceed with the process. Okay, so we roll call vote for accepting the application as complete. Paula Hancock?
Yes.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
I'm going to recuse myself. I haven't seen any of this paperwork yet.
Oh, okay, I, okay. And I will, I will vote yes on this also. The, at this point, I will open the public hearing. And I know, Jack, you presented for the applicants most of the information during the zoning board variance process. And I know Kathleen and Paula and I were present for that entire thing and he was not. Would you like to still summarize a little bit since it's just briefly and then we will, then we will get into our questions.
The site plan really tells a lot. It shows the parcel in question, the location, the proposed improvements, tree lines, all that sort of thing. And maybe it'd be helpful, Mardine, if you showed Andy, the rest of the board, a copy of the proposed renderings of the building to be constructed.
Okay, I will do that. Okay, I will do that first. Okay. Yeah, just a minute, share, I'm going to share a screen. Just just a moment here. Okay, is that visible yet?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, do you want to explain the views? As I scroll through them?
Sure, I might defer for a moment to Tony to speak about that.
Okay.
Okay, from looking at the first view that you have up there, that would be the end of the building where if you look at the site plan shows covered entry, that would be coming into driveway and that's what you would see. As well, the, the view down below it.
Is also.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a different angle of the same, same view.
Yeah, okay, and then this one at the top?
Okay, that one at the top will be on the side away from the road.
Okay.
And, and that'll be a roofed storage area for, I think, Nick's, some of Nick's lumber and stuff. So, so that helps shield it from the road, any materials that he might have on site.
Okay.
And the one down below that, you'll see that he has a doorway there so that when he's getting a delivery, they can take it and back it into, into the building.
Okay.
And like you said, you know, the, the deliveries will be very minimal and the doorway will also be used, I'm pretty sure for him when he gets his cabinets made for his customer for him to back in there, load them up and transport them out of there. So we've left enough room around the back for him to get in there.
Okay. And there's that end. And this side, this last image?
This, this last image here will be facing towards the road. And as you see, they have it kind of with some earth tones to it, so it's not going to stick out. You know, with the tree buffer and everything that's there, I think it helps shield, it shields it from anything looking like that it's really any type of, of, you know, construction building, if you will.
Okay. Okay, can I put this site plan up and then you can talk about that building in relation to? Okay, let me do one more, share a screen. Okay, share, okay. The building we were just looking at is right here, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a magenta colored. I'm starting to do my plans a little bit in color to help.
Okay, I'm going to enlarge.
Stuff rather than it all being all black. So, because when it's just black on white, everything looks the same. If you look at the site plan, we've put the setback lines on. If you look at the site plan, we've put the setback lines on, on there and you'll see the sidelines and the rear of the lot, it's 25 feet. And at the roadside, it's 35 feet. And you'll see that we've kept the building tucked back towards the backside of the lot. And off to the right where there's a buffer that Michael Tulip still owns out by his driveway of trees to help shield it. And if you notice the driveway where it comes in, we didn't have a driveway coming straight so somebody driving by can look down the driveway and see the building. You know, because really, we're trying to take into consideration with doing this project about affecting the neighbors and the butters. On the lot next to this, I'm going to go to that where the Samsons live. Big, big garage and house. And it really it really, you can really see that more than anything on that street when you drive by. He has no, there's no protective barriers or anything for people seeing his place. And we've decided to do a little better idea and kind of shade it because we want the neighbors to make it still feel like it's their residential neighborhood. I mean, I actually live in that neighborhood and I drive by that every day. And I see where people have vehicles parked and stuff and, you know, that's, that's their thing to do. But we've taken that into consideration to keep everything back away from the street so it doesn't affect people when they're driving by or, or the neighbors when they get into their car to leave their homes. That was really a lot of our big thought process when we were doing this. You know, Nick is not really going to have any outside lighting on the building at all. If he does, we'll do something to shield it in a downward position. When, when he's not there at night, I'm sure there's not going to be any lights on. He has no anticipation of having lights, lights on. So, and he doesn't plan on being there at night. So I think, I think the lighting part of it's, you know, a little bit of a moot point. He also is going to, if you look, I put a note on there that he's not going to have an outside solid waste disposal. He's going to have it inside the building. So all his scraps and everything will be in the building and when he needs to go to the transfer facility or take his, his waste product wherever he takes it, and I'm not sure what he does with it, it won't be seen outside. And so that, that was a big consideration for him when we were putting this proposal together. And, and as you'll notice, you know, from those renderings, you did see that the side that faces the street is not going to have windows, so even if he's in there, no one's going to see lighting coming out towards the street. You know, because we know in the wintertime, you know, it gets darker earlier. And there may be a few times when he's there and it's dark because, you know, he works all day and he's got to take care of some business there at night or later in the evening. So that was a consideration for, for that particular side of the building when we were, when we were working on that.
Are there any windows on the, any of the other sides?
Yes, there are. I, I, I'm not sure. Let me, let Nick speak to the window layout of the building.
We don't have, I don't have the rendering in front of me, but I believe there was two windows on the, the front entryway as he came in where there would be a small office. Just to let some natural light in there and flip through them.
Let me pull it back. Okay, let me pull it back up again. There's green, okay.
Really, there's just those, like, say, there's two small windows in the front. None, none, none.
Okay, there's the door. Two windows there, okay.
And then that, the anticipation of that area is just a small office area for my wife and I to, you know, do some paperwork or bring a potential client in there just for a sit-down meeting, go over some plans real quick. And that's the use of that, that front space.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, you know, the rest of the space is used as primarily a workshop area. Small tool storage.
Okay.
Right, which isn't used, I mean, this, this is not a everyday use. It's a place that I free, you know, pretty much by myself. I'll stop there three or four times a week, maybe work out of there a couple days. Not full days, I mean, they're odd, my hours are odd hours there. Seven to four, five o'clock, I'm out at sites and it's a stop there afterward. Couple hours working on some cabinetry or small piece of furniture or something. Or maybe a few hours during the weekend days, but it's not an everyday use area. And that's the only windows in it. I mean, there's some light in the overhead door on the rear of the building. The rendering shows a glass door next to the overhead door, which wouldn't be an actual glass door. That would be a solid door.
Okay. Come back to the site plan. There, will there be restroom facility inside the building?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so you will be putting a well in and a septic system?
Yeah. Yeah, then correct. Correct, sorry. I just speak with Tony momentarily. Sorry about that.
Okay. Jack, anything, Jack or Tony or Nick, anything else you want to explain before I give the butters to ask questions?
Tony mentioned to me, I should point something out to you. I think he's right. The lot coverage is very, very, very small compared to where the house could be. So it's a lot smaller. In every way measurable, this impact is less than the house would be. So, I mean, as we discussed before, I have neighbors next to me, their cars come and go all the time. This is very, very minimal, not even every day necessarily. Lot coverage is less, my neighbor clear cut. And all I'm saying is, you can't legislate common sense. This is a really good effort in minimizing everything. As Nick said last time, Andy was not here, that his current location for his current shop, doing the same thing he's doing, proposing to do now, is in a area right next door by a common wall with a yoga studio and they're pretty quiet. Nick's work is so quiet that they've never had any discussions about being a problem. His equipment is high-tech and it's very quiet. He's put soundproofing in, it's so far back from the road. Tony, how far back is this? I think you said it was 100 yards from the White House, for example? One sec.
So so to the, to the road right away is 100 feet. It's like 110 feet back from the road at its closest point. And it does get back as far as 160 feet.
Right.
Um, if you look at the Google Earth thing that I did with my GPS and showed where the site for the proposed woodworking shop was going to be, I put on that distances to relative to everybody's house there based on the GPS readings that I got.
Is that visible to everyone?
Haven't seen that before.
Okay, is this visible right now?
You mean the, this you referred to?
The Google, can everyone see the Google Earth view right now?
No.
No, okay, just a moment, just a moment.
Thank you.
There should be now.
Yeah, so, so if you look at it, you'll see where it says proposed woodworking shop.
Yes.
If you go in a northeasterly direction or off towards the right, you'll see the Weiss dwelling. It's 320 feet from the woodworking shop to their dwelling. And then if you look at the, off to the left on the other side of the road, the Swanson dwelling. I think that's even further away.
350.
350. The closest one is the Samsons. And they're 270. And so, um, you know, I, I don't know if they've attended these meetings or if they have a concern, but it doesn't seem like that they have any concerns about, about it that I know of. Okay, the only other thing I'd like to point out is in the regulations, you can cover your lot by 35% of your dwelling in that, in that rural residential zone. So they allow up to 35% to be covered. And if you look at my plan in the lower left-hand corner, I did a little lot coverage summation and I actually included the driveway and the house, the area that it's going to be impact. And the total, the total is about 20.9%. So we're under any lot coverage that would have, that could possibly be potentially an issue if somebody was to build a house there.
Okay.
And also, I know as you home, if you run in the roadway.
Okay. I'm going to leave the, the plan here for the time being. Butters? Any comments or questions from the butters?
Yes, this is Lisa Weiss. Thank you for the deliberations and for the presentation. I, I do want to just say that I could not agree with you more that there are many worse possible uses. And I do agree that the size of this facility and the thoughtful design is, is good. And, and I'll just repeat what I said last time that I, I, I do I, I completely support the, the notion that the that, that the day one intentions of what Nick and Amy are planning are, I mean, they sound in Jack's words, fairly benign. I, I still worry about the sawing and pounding. Just listening to Arva do that for a little while on his shed that was 350 feet away, I was thinking, oh, we're dealing with that every day. But I do agree with you that the insulation and indoors is a different situation with than, than Arva being outside. I mean, that said, the variance has passed and so my, my concern and request to the, the planning board is, is more related to not Nick and Amy's intentions on day one. But really, the, what, what Martine, you had stated that the planning board can set conditions of operational use. And I think, you know, both the, the zoning board's decision was based on that operational use as it was described by, by Jack and Nick. You know, at that time, they, he didn't mention it today, but said things like, there, in the last meeting, that there would be no hazardous materials and you know, two people working, I guess he said that today during 7:30 to 3:00 and minimal clearing, vacuuming his sawdust. And today he mentioned the outdoor lighting and out there at night, the solid waste indoors, et cetera. That all sounds and I'm sure, I fully trust that that's, that's what, you know, Nick is, Nick and Amy are planning. And I know when I mentioned this last time, and Arva did too, about our concerns about the future because this, this paperwork is permanent. And, and I do fully recognize that if you were to want to expand the facility or a parking lot or, you know, something very objective like that, they would have to go back to the zoning board. Now, granted, that, that zone, that, that variance now is, is not against a residential property. It's against a commercial property, so the incremental will be small. So there will be an incremental variance over a commercial property. And it will be easier to meet those five criteria than if it were residential. So I guess what that translates to for me is just, you know, as you, you know as well or better than I do, that what matters when a future owner comes in, not Nick and Amy, but when a future owner comes in because they might want to stay there forever, but it's, it, what matters is what's on paper. And so I think the conditions that, that you could set forth on, on on paper will help preserve the intention that, that Nick and Jack have described. And, and then also make that, that next, you know, the future owner, whenever it may be, five, 10 years or multiple times, that incremental request for variance will be just a little bit higher of a bar if there are conditions that, that would help maintain the, the intention of, of working in a very, as, as you've described, a very respectful way of a rural, rural residential neighborhood. So, so that, so again, I just, I just want to state it's, it's not about your current intentions. I do completely believe and trust what you're saying. I, I would like to get it as much on paper as we can for the future owners that will be buying this or requesting further incremental variances over time. Thank you.
Jack, any response?
No, I'm hearing what Lisa says and I appreciate her positivity. It's hard to quantify these things sometimes. We have a noise ordinance in this town, applies to commercial, residential or mixed use. My take is, it'd be hard to see the property or hear the property. I personally am not in favor of over lawyering or over uncovering anything. I, I like people to use common sense. I think you need a baseline of what we did today on the plan. Basically, we approved a woodworking shop with an office. I mean, it's not hard to quantify what we've done today. I don't know what conditions the board has in mind, actually. I think this is all very positive. I thank Lisa for her positivity. And I, I have a lot of faith in the process and the neighbors to watch it and somebody which would see the permission. I have no doubt that the CBA will hear it or the planning board will hear it.
Can I just, do I get a chance to respond to that?
Sure.
And so I, I just, I, I agree with you, Jack, that, that perfect world to rely on common sense. I completely agree with that for the current time. I think we have to picture the, you know, the next person who comes in and, and wants to buy it and use it for its current use if there are no other conditions set. I'm not planning on trying to monitor that and make sure that, you know, Nick's not coming in at 7:37. That's not my, my intent. It really is just, it's, it's the paperwork. I've seen it so many times with other contracts. This is not my area of expertise, but what, what's not written just makes it for the next, the next guy who's not nice, the nice person. Just, we just have to imagine that person coming in, buying the property and, and not necessarily expanding the facility, but expanding other pieces of the operational use.
Well, I'm not suggesting for the moment that you plan to monitor or walk around. I'm simply saying that if the next guy online didn't have mixed ethics and wanted to create a used car lock or, or, or something like that, I feel very comfortable the neighborhood would react to that. And I think the planning board would too. So I think, I think we have to have faith in the system also.
Planning board members, any comments, questions? And Andy? Any questions you have or comments also? Welcome to, you are an official member of the planning board.
Martine?
Yes.
I would like to see that the, all the roadside trees, except for the driveway cut, remain in place for a buffer.
We plan on doing that anyhow.
I see there's only three parking spots that it doesn't expand beyond that.
There are three parks. There are three parking spots, I think, for vehicles, is that right? I mean, anything left over, like we talked before about vehicles being put from the property to talk about, that parking would occur behind the building to be outside.
I don't know if thi- this is a condition, but if I was in a butter, I would like to see the building probably painted in a, uh, um, any trim in a muted tone, a brown, a tan, a green, so it blends in with the vegetation when it's there and when it isn't. So, so as you drive by, you will not even, I, I noticed the markup had red, that might catch your eye if you drive by slowly, to have it muted tones, so it just blends into the surrounding.
Completely consistent with us, I gotta Nick address that if you'd like.
Yeah, so, that, hold up, the rendering's out once again, we had already taken that into consideration. We plan on the building being, you know, more of a earthy brown kind of color, uh, as you will. We plan on a stone kind of wainscoting, exterior wainscoting, uh, natural stone that blends in with the natural surroundings. So all these points they just made is something that we, we had considered, um, and that was our intent.
Yeah, it's, it's the red trim on this rendering that jumps out if it was a more earth tone, it would, um,
Yeah, that, that's kind of just like, you know, the architect that we hired, uh, showing like a, it's a natural wood, um, structure, be it maybe cedar, which will, you know, be a light brown color in its natural state.
I, I don't know, you might, I, you know, for all I know, you might have a thing for red trim.
No, I promise you we don't, uh, it'll all be, uh, natural wood. The wood on the front will be just a natural clear coat finish being a, um, light brown in color in its natural state.
Yeah, the only other thing, um, I'd like to mention is signage. Perhaps it could be just the street number to comply with nine-one-one. Uh, not a name of your business, just the street sign, just the, a sign with the number, so when, uh, you have deliveries, that's where they're gonna go, whatever number, Aldrook Road that is. And that way, it won't jump out, uh, anybody in the area, um, drawing attention that, that you do have a business there. I don't know, I don't know if that's a condition we can set, but, um, that way it would, if people, people would just drive by and think there's probably a home down that driveway.
Correct, that was our, again, that was our intent is just to have a street number at the road. Um, no signage at the road. There would be always some small lettering on the front door, just so you pull into the building, you would see some lettering on that front glass door that says Aldrook.
Yeah. Like you have now down at the mill number three.
Correct, same setup as that.
Now, I don't have any other remarks.
Just, just two, um, occur to me, one is, how do you get the delivery, you, you, from the top rendering, you come down the driveway and that puts you at the front door. Um, how do you get the delivery trucks around back? Do you have enough room to get them around the building? That's question number one.
And to answer that one, um, on Tony's site plan, as the driveway comes in, you would go around the building behind the, well, next to the cupboard storage area. It'd still be a gravel driveway giving us fifteen feet of clearance around the cupboard storage area to receive a delivery at the back door.
Okay, the end of the building that I'm pointing to is where your overhead door is, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the vehicles would come in, if I heard you right, would come in this way, cross the front and, and then to this end.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so you, so you do have, um, my second question, um, talks about, uh, the noise level. And I know we've talked a lot about noise level. But I wasn't, uh, sure with the foam type insulation you're proposing to put in, whether that will, that will mute the noise enough.
Absolutely, um, from outside of our shop area, you, you will not hear us. Um, I mean, the small tools that we use inside are not very loud, um, we have a dust collection system that, you know, obviously will take care of any pollution area, you know, wood chip pollution, um, that keeps the shop neat and clean. The current shop that I'm in absolutely has no, no insulation in it, it's a old brick building, um, down in the mill. And like I say, we are connected to yoga studio there, which we do not disturb in there on the other side of a drywall wall. Um, with the tree buffer that will still be there to all surrounding properties. I just don't see how the noise will be heard from inside the building.
Andy?
Is your, um, is your dust collector gonna be vented outside or is it all vented inside?
It's all self-contained inside, um. It's a four-inch suction hose with some offspring legs to each component that I use. It self-collects into a large plastic, you know, bag, which then I, once filled, I dispose of, uh, offsite and I put a new one on. So everything is self-contained within, within the shop area.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You know, like I say, this isn't a, uh, everyday use for, for, uh, an everyday cabinet shop, this is a few cabinets made every month, maybe, um, just a small, small piece of furniture for a custom home we're doing. This isn't an everyday use, like we're in there making kitchen cabinets every day. It's a, it's just a buy the order kind of thing on a custom home that we happen to be building or something, so small pieces of case work or a bookshelf or stuff like that.
To follow up on that, um, could you give us some idea of your concept of, um, what a business week would, would look like a Monday, say a Monday through Friday?
I, it, it's not really, um, it's not a Monday through Friday thing for me, like I say, it's not an everyday use. It is more of, um, out at a job site from seven to three-thirty, four or five o'clock. Um, on my way home, I'll stop, maybe work for an hour on a piece or on a Saturday or Sunday, I may go down there for an hour or two and work on a custom piece, um. It's definitely not an everyday use, there's really no set times, I'm not there usually during that seven to three o'clock timeframe, because we are out on site building homes. It's, it may be a quick stop by in the morning to grab a tool out of there, I'm in there for five minutes, I'm in and out. And particular set schedule at all. So it's kind of hard to give you a, an exact kind of weekly schedule.
Well, the, the, the whole idea that you'll be off-site most of the day, um, fills in the question, fills in the question that I had, so, um, basically you, you're using your, your workshop for, um, custom-made cabinets or, or particular pieces that, that you're working on, so you drop in after work, but from your description of your workshop, it sounds like, um, all the work would be done inside, you've taken care of the noise factor and the cleanliness factor.
Correct, everything will be.
So, so there, there would be a, a minimum of noise and most of the time people wouldn't know you were there. And that answers my question. Okay, um, there was something, I thought I read somewhere in one of the documents. I don't remember whether it was something that Jack put together or it was part of the application. But it mentioned something about working there during the day. If, I remember something being said, more you would be there during the day and now, um, some reference to not during the day, but a few hours after the regular workday. So I'm, I'm sensing a conflict here between an information.
I'm, I'm looking at the application, so Tony put together the site and review, I don't see anything there.
Yeah, I don't see, and I'm wondering if it may have been mentioned at the meeting the, last week.
I think it may have been mentioned at the ZVA meeting.
I believe so.
Last, we had last week.
Um, yeah, I don't recall that much discussion about the hours of operation in ZVA meeting myself. I just don't, I don't really know precisely when he will work because there's no set schedule, so I don't think I would say.
Yeah.
I just don't know, it's clear to me, it's on demand, if a certain house has certain needs and what the cabinet is, he'll do it, otherwise if they buy him something off the rack, then he won't, that's my impression. So I, I don't know, I would have said that, I did, I was clearly wrong.
It wasn't you, Jack, I think, um, Nick was just, uh, describing that he normally works, uh, seven-thirty to three, um, when.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and I think that was, okay, that's, that's where the, my confusion was, you were referring to your regular day onsite.
Correct. Nick for that, it wasn't me this time.
Okay. Okay.
Not guilty. Not guilty, yeah.
Okay.
Martine?
Yes. Yes, Susan?
I'm not sure how your motion for the variance was granted for specifically the woodworking shop. Uh, I, I think the clarification needs to be that it's an adjunct for his building company and that it's not going to be retail, so there's no customers in and out, it's not a retail shop that he is custom me, you know, custom-making cabinets for anybody who happens to knock on his door. So I think you really need to very clarify the function of this and that is then tied to the hours that he might possibly be using it. And so if you make a condition, something about any kind of hours or any kind of noise, that it's, if there are noise issues, that then he will follow up on noise abatement kind of, um, whether it's adding materials or something else. I mean, it shouldn't be a problem, but I remember a similar case with noise as, uh, an issue that there, there was a lot of discussion about if some things did not work, that further abatement would be addressed.
Be addressed.
That makes sense.
Just to clarify all, all the different things that come into play on this, that, um, it doesn't expand to be anything further than an adjunct to his building construction that is always off-site and that, um, no retail or other kind of activities would be involved in this particular use of the building.
Yeah, okay.
We think that's fine, uh, if there is granted for a small office and his adjunct woodworking shop, it's a theater to his business, it's not intended, it will not be. Retail in nature is simply an adjunct to his business, that's correct.
Yes, yes.
Well, that's very fair, Susan.
Yeah.
I, let's see. One, one other thing I've got a concern about is I understand that the building is set back a good distance from the front of the lot. And we do have, um, vegetative buffers around here. I would assume some of that may be year-round, I mean, I would assume it's a mix of year-round vegetation and seasonal vegetation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to see something, and I'm not sure quite where, um, probably from the to lessen the view from the road in, especially in the wintertime. What I'm thinking, especially the view from the road, uh, from, oh, from this side of the driveway in this direction towards the building, to shield, to have a little more, uh, year-round type of vegetation to shield the view, especially during the wintertime. Um, I think that would be advantageous to the neighbors, especially the neighbors are, are right across, the road. Would that be something that would be possible?
Maybe Tony can field that for our team.
Okay.
Oh, team, oh. The only thing that I will caution you on is that the trees in there are very big. And what happens is those bigger trees help block the view from the road, but it also keeps the understory from growing, so if you were to plant, say some balsam fir, some hemlock in that understory, it would be very slow to grow because it would not get the sunlight that's required. And I would be a little hesitant to cut down those bigger trees.
Oh, I'm not saying cut anything down.
So, I mean, he could plant trees there, but I'm gonna tell you they're gonna grow very slowly because not gonna get the sunlight that's required to make them grow. And certainly he can, he can throw some in there and, uh, and, and see, see what happens. It's just that they're not gonna grow at a rate that's really gonna be of benefit, I don't think.
Tony's correct in that comment, um. The other thing I had considered was this continuance of the woods road. Um, that perhaps where that opening is, some vegetation is planted there, so no one, uh, thinks it's a, a second driveway. I don't know the condition of it.
That, that actually goes across Mike's property there. What is going to be done with that? Is there anything that's gonna be?
It's not gonna be utilized for the, for the project and I think, I think, uh, it's a great idea that we could plant some, uh, smaller, you know, softwood trees in that so that it, it helps block that straight view down that little road and it doesn't encourage anybody to go in there.
That, that was my concern, somebody might think that it was a driveway, a second driveway.
I think that's a good point, Kathleen, and I think, I think, uh, they, they can make that happen.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you know, e- even if it's where the prop, well, I see, one of, you know, the parking space, the parking is gonna be in that, I, I'm moving my mouse like it makes any difference, uh, over the screen. So, it's, it doesn't work, um, that, yes, part of the parking will be taken up by the woods road. I, I just know woods roads are very attractive to some people, they see a little opening and said, oh, let's check this out. Um, so if, even if it's where the property line.
The property line is.
Right there, that, a, a little, a row of, um, let's say white pines or hemlocks maybe, if the, um, surrounding trees aren't too big, uh, might be put there and even if this will go, or even rocks, even boulders. The, so people won't, so it won't be, it, so it won't appear to be in access.
Right, actually, Mike was saying, I stepped out with Mike, uh, while you were talking with Tony, and he said in his deed to Nick, he'll be happy to give up any rights that he may have, his piece may have, use the woods road, which means basically that woods road will be annihilated. He's happy with some boulders in front too, he's got plenty of boulders lying around, that's his job, so, so boulders, maybe some trees, so we can do something with you on that score.
Okay, okay. Okay. Kathleen or Paula or, um, Andy or Susan, any other comments?
No. I think, um, the point made by the butter, um, is clear that everything should be documented for any future. Um, it, it is clear that It it is clear that. The variance was done for a woodworking shop in the, in the scope that it was presented at. Although there are some. Abilities to to expand things that have been approved. If you clearly define what has been approved, then anything in a change would still have to go through some kind of process. So. Whether it's a new owner or a new use of the building or a greatly expanded use of the building. It would have to go through the whole process again and I I just.
Yeah.
For everybody's peace of mind, it should be as clear as possible as as to exactly. Addressing the intents of the. The request at the moment and think of what the future possibilities might be in order to. Make it clear for everybody involved that what's being approved and. Nothing too much out of, out of any kind of. Expansion that would be really. Too much for the property itself, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do we? Process question, Susan. When we say document as much as possible what we are approving, can we? Even to the point of specifying the size of the building or reference to the. Submitted plan be sufficient for that?
Yeah, I think approving the plan as submitted with all, all the dimensions that are mentioned. And and the layout itself. I know sometimes when you're building, things might have to be tweaked just a little bit if you hit ledge or whatever, whatever else. But the the basic idea of what is being approved is this particular size building. And the use that is being asked of it and.
Right.
I think approving this site plan is is probably sufficient. Now, if you want to make additional con- conditions such as.
Then we specify.
Is it more of a noise problem than anticipated that further abatement would be in order? And any other things you can think of in that direction? Again, Kathleen's suggestion of. Making it clear that the woods road is not an access point and.
Right, right.
That the site plan regulations do mention buffers, particularly when you're approving. A very, yeah, a nonconforming use in a residential zone, that you're very clear about what kind of buffers that you are. Specifying. Sometimes, again, you know, people have to take off, take out a little more. Trees than they thought they would have to for access and and whatever else, but. Just to make it clear that everything is going to meet the regulations and that the site plan is approved as presented.
Right, right. Okay, any other comments? Planning board, any other questions for the applicant, either from planning board or from the butters? Before I close the public hearing.
I just had a question to Susan's last point about documenting. Is it? Is it possible or have you seen? To just like generally say, again, thinking about a future owner coming in. That the uses are kind of in the spirit of the intentions that were described in the, in minutes? Because I think we've talked about a lot of things and and I don't, and to Jack's point, I, you know, I don't want to necessarily have like all this. Documentation about restrictions, but I mean, there was a clear intention that that Nick has described in both. Meetings that I would, you know, just love to kind of have the spirit of that be. Maintained if if a future owner comes in and I don't know if that, if you can just refer to that, that spirit of that intention. As as described in the minutes.
Was that a question for Susan you had?
Well.
Or?
I was just kind of.
Okay.
It for for the planning board. It's a.
Okay.
I don't, Susan's role versus yours.
Yeah. We can. I mean, need help with the wording, but we obviously any. As as we will, if we approve the plan as presented with the building. And layout as presented and and what other other conditions. Any. Future deviance from that is going to require coming back to both the zoning board and the planning board.
I was referring to the other, like the operational use more than the objective piece. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Like the hat in the other topics.
That it's a, that it is a woodworking shop and adjunct to the, to the. Offsite construction business. That's right. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I just, that again, there there were, we talked about so many things in both meetings. I didn't know if you could just refer to the intention as described in the meeting notes, but there were, you know, the hazard, no hazardous materials and.
Oh, okay.
The hours and he said, a couple of people who'd be working there. You know, small projects, all, all, there were a number of things and so I just didn't know if we could just refer to.
Okay.
No use, you know. As, as, as kind of intended based on the discussion in the meeting notes. Again, just for the future owner.
Okay, we'll consider some of these things. Yeah. Just making a couple of notes here, just a moment. Do you have one question of Nick? That just came to mind. Sorry about the musical chairs there. Thank you. You, you talked about. More likely coming in like a couple hours at the end of the day to do some work or or a few hours on the weekends. When would deliveries be likely to be made?
Deliveries would be Monday through Friday, probably from the hours, you know, eight to three. Like it was, like I stated at the zoning board. If I was to get a delivery, it's maybe one small truck, maybe, you know, ten sheets of plywood, we call it, maybe. That is maybe once a month, maybe delivery. That would probably be on the high end of things.
Okay.
But a very small truck, normal business hours, Monday. From a lumber supply company.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to caution here too that you, you can't. Although you can set conditions and limits on the commercial use in a rural residential zone. You have to be very careful not to step over the line that you restrict what would be allowed to anybody else in the rural residential zone. So again, as far as hours go, it would obviously also be. Tied to the noise ordinance that is in place in town that anybody else has to adhere to. Whatever noise anybody is making on any property. And you can't necessarily say, well, you can't make noise after six PM or something when anybody else in the zone can. So just be very mindful that you can overstep and be more restrictive to what. Is actually allowed to anybody else in the zone.
Right, right.
Just be mindful of what everybody else has to adhere to anyway.
Yes, yes. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make that motion.
At a second. I'll second it. Okay, and roll call vote. Kathleen DeWolf.
Hi.
Paula Hancock.
Hi.
Martine Badger, I. And Andy, you're still here?
I'm still here.
Still here.
Hi.
Okay. I'm going to, okay. Okay, so the public hearing portion is closed. Now we as a planning board need to. Make some decisions. Ultimately, whether we are going to approve the site plan or not and in addition, whether we are going to. Attach some conditions to that approval or so. Okay, Kathleen, first. Recommendations.
Well, since I brought up about the woods road. Make sure on, at least on the property line, that is. We don't need gates and bars, but we need a a barrier so it can, can't be accessed from all book road. Since we accepted the site plan, some of the questions were on the site plan, such as the downward lighting. The parking, waste bins. And within the narrative from exhibit A, some of the other issues. Parking vehicles and equipment behind fence, a landscape barrier will occur behind the structure. No signs will be located. On the property, no commercial lighting. So that is within. That, that's what came to the zoning board. Now, I don't know if we have to put that. Can we put that as exhibit A from the zoning board or do we have to spell it out?
I think I would rather see us. Establish our own wording and our own conditions.
Okay. All right, it's so parking of vehicles and equipment behind fenced or landscape barrier. Will, will occur behind the structure. No, that's on the side. I take that back.
Well, parking as designated on the site plan.
Okay.
I mean, if, if we talk about accepting the site plan as presented.
Bented.
Including the location of the parking.
Location, the parking to three spots.
Yeah.
No signs will be located on the property. No commercial lighting.
Okay, site plan, location of parking, location of. Building. No commercial site signage. Lighting, you said no commercial lighting. Is that what you said?
Yes, you know, like a marquee with an arrow pointing down the driveway. Yes, or the baby guy, the inflatable person. One of those, some of that stuff. No, no sign with the time and temperature. I'm sorry, did I just?
Okay. Uh, let's see. Waste storage of.
Contained inside.
Now, thinking back to what Susan just said also though.
If it has to be outside, it will have to be enclosed. With with fencing or vegetation, so it's not visible.
And I'm just making some notes here, just a minute.
And as Susan said, we can't make this more stringent than.
No.
What a homeowner might choose to do on their property.
And that's why I was concerned about the wording with the waste storage.
Yep.
Okay, Susan.
Yes.
I'm wording on that waste storage. You mentioned not more restrictive. They did talk about. Containing the waste within the building. Can we? That is, that obviously is more restrictive than what a residential property in that neighborhood would. Would have to abide by.
It is also within the site plan regulations that dumpsters even downtown have to be somehow. Shielded.
Shielded, yes, yes, yes.
It wouldn't be excessive for the 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 intended use.
Yeah, so if the, if the waste storage is not inside, it should be. She, and if it is outside, it should be shielded, shielded from, from.
Public view.
View, yeah, okay.
And then with the noise, I mean, you, you can't restrict him to, from saying that he can't go in there and work in his shop at.
No, no.
If he wants to, the only, the only thing would be that if the noise did appear to be excessive in some way. Then it also has to follow the ordinance in town that. You know, if your next door neighbor wants to be building something, he can't be making noise after ten PM or whatever. The parameters are in the ordinance that stands in the town. So I don't think the hours are necessarily have to be something that has to be dictated by.
Now. Yeah.
Just that if they somehow interfere with. Making noise or whatever else, so.
Yeah.
And I don't, it doesn't appear that that will be any kind of problem.
Yeah. Paula and Andy, any other input? Into conditions or um Okay, let me just review, we've talked about um the site plan as presented, indicating location of the structure, location of parking, location of the uh driveway access. Uh, we've taught, we've mentioned establishing a barrier on the property line to um barrier on the Woods Road at the property line to prevent public access. Uh, we've said no commercial lighting, um there's no commercial signage, that uh waste storage either inside or enclosed uh and not visible from the public outside. Um, if no, if the noise appears excessive or contrary to the Town of Ashland's noise ordinance, that additional sound remediation would be done. Let's see.
Um, what does the, what do the ordinance, what does the ordinance say about um in inspection by the uh fire chief, health safety officer, etc.?
Okay, we will
As far as, as far as other, in terms of other businesses in the area.
I mean, um, obviously there I think we would want a fire chief to uh, some standard inspections to address life safety issues.
In conjunction with the building inspector.
Yes, yes. There was, there was a standard uh phrase in that we have put on a couple of things recently, dealing with um with inspections, dealing with life safety issues and built, building inspector, all that whole process, so we'll
Once he applies for his uh building permit, then a building inspector will be part of the process.
Right, right, and yeah.
Um, are there uh rules in place, I'm I'm asking, are there rules in place for any sort of um annual or bi-yearly inspection?
I don't think so. Life, life safety issues, Paula?
Yeah.
No, not an annual inspection, no, no.
Okay, I'm 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 just, I'm just asking, because I don't know the
Yeah.
The limitations of of that.
No, we don't have an ordinance addressing that.
No, okay.
Yeah, usually the fire chief would would like to just check with the the access for a a fire truck able to access the building.
Emergency vehicles.
Right, right, yeah.
That's the usual, but other than that, um, life safety is up to the employer when they have any employees and have to deal with the feds on OSHA issues or whatever else, so that's not anything we have to consider.
Yeah. Okay. Any other conditions we need to address?
Um, the use of materials as part of the process. I'm thinking particularly of the of the latex paint or anything else as far as finishes are concerned. Are there any, is there anything we should address as far as conditions and so far as that's concerned?
I don't think, um, other than, other than just follow standard, um again, that would, that would get into some of the life safety issues, that would be covered by some of that. Um, yeah. Any other discussion before we make a motion of some sort?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, I will accept a motion.
A motion for?
Are we going to make a motion to approve the site plan or to not approve the site plan? That, those are the two options we have at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
And is that to include the conditions that
With the, with, with
That we have discussed.
With the addendum conditions, yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, comments? Changes? Okay, roll call vote, Kathleen DeWolf?
Aye.
Paula Hancock?
Aye.
Andy Fitch?
I'm going to again recuse myself.
Okay. And Martine Badger, aye. Okay, so we will write up the notice of decision, which will include the conditions uh that we have gone through. And that will be communicated to the applicants and to the butters. Uh, also goes to all the standard officials in town, uh, building inspector, code enforcement, fire chief, et cetera. They all get notified of that, um. The there is a right to appeal that is available to either depending, it would be available to either the applicant or the butters. And it's a, Susan, thirty days from the date of the notice of decision, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. And
Well, actually, on the planning board, it's, yeah, it's as soon as the decision is made.
Okay, thirty days from tonight, then.
Right.
Yes, yes.
The butters could also appeal the ZBA decision, but that's, again, same deal, thirty days from the clock probably starts tomorrow, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other business before us tonight?
We'd like to thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Seriously, we appreciate it, you're all volunteers, and it was not the easiest application, well found out in your, we appreciate very much all your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody.
I agree.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, and the meeting is adjourned.